Welcome this evening and please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the August 28th Tiffin City School Board of Education meeting. Mr. Cook, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Perez.
Here.
Isabelle?
Here.
Dr. Gase?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Dr. McBride?
Here. Brings us our next item, which is adopting the agenda. Mr. Cook, do we have any corrections or additions?
To Corrections, page two. The name listed for the resignation is Tamara Andrews. It should be Tamara Carter. Page four, pupil activity. We're going to be removing Joseph Stacy. Page 147, Connie English. The dates of that contract should be August 17th, 2023, through May 24th, 2024. That's all the corrections.
What page was that?
147.
147.
That every time with her, no?
You said August 14th.
August 17th.
August 17th. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as corrected.
I move to it.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussions or questions? Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase? Mr. Kizabelle?
Yes.
Perez? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. This brings us to the superintendent's reports and recommendations. Mr. Richards?
So I just wanted to talk about the start of the school year very briefly. We have finished with the first week and a half kind of of school, and I couldn't be more thrilled with how our staff and our principals and everybody involved with Tiffin City Schools has responded. There is a different type of energy in a positive way. Should specify in a positive way to start the school year. Friday, maybe one of my favorite days that I've had here so far, getting to walk around the buildings on Friday and getting to see some of the energy that we've had in there. That was culminated with the high school that led the pep rally, and that was actually designed by our new leadership class at the high school. Those staff members and students actually put together the planning for that pep rally. And then even going into the football game, while everybody will want to talk about the result of the football game, which was truly the cherry on top of the sundae, but it was great seeing packed stands. It was great seeing, I love it when our younger kids come to the football games, but it was great seeing it be less of a zoo underneath the concessions area is what it sometimes is. So I appreciate all of the staff that have come for that, but it's been a wonderful beginning of the school year. We still have some things that we've got to work out. We always get better as the school year goes on. You know, we have transportation that gets better and faster as we go along. So we still have some things that we have to clean up there, same as in the lunch lines. Once we give two to three weeks of kids being in school, all of those processes usually kind of iron themselves out and get a lot faster. And we're still in that process, but so far, it's been a nice start to the school year, with the exception of last Thursday, that we canceled because of the heat. As it turned out, that was a fortuitous thing because during Thursday, we lost, at some different points in time, we lost power, we lost electricity, water, and internet at some points in time, and had flooded roads in the morning. So I swear I don't have any special skill set to help me predict things, or else I'd gamble, which I don't. So don't ask me for lottery ticket numbers. I don't think I'd be of any assistance. But we've also had the Communication Committee start. We had our first meeting with the Communication Committee. It was really great getting some of the feedback. One of the first things, and that's a group of parents, that's a group of educators, to just see how we can better communicate. One of the first deliverables that we're going to try to work on is actually updating our website specifically on the building, on the school district calendar, so that we are better able to inform parents and community members as to what's going on in our schools. So that was the, I would say, number one with a with big exclamation marks to make sure we're working on that. And I know with Mrs. Spar, we're already trying to address some of that. Finally, is looking at the district calendar. We're going to be having a calendar committee meet. This is the last year of a board-approved calendar. So, and my understanding is we've typically done two to three years worth of calendars at a go. So we do not have a board-approved calendar for after the school year. Per our negotiated agreement, we will be working with TEA to do that process, but I think we're also going to be looking to try to get some feedback from parents and community members to get their thoughts on what our calendar should be moving forward. I will say this, I think we really need to explore our start date for Tiffin City Schools. We keep starting earlier and earlier, and there's some logic in that, in that we're trying to get in more instructional days before state mandated test at the end of the year. But my experience has been, and we all live in Ohio, for better or worse, August seems to be warmer, and that's where our worst days are. So we're putting our instructional days when it's really hot in our buildings. And so, as people have reminded me, looking at the weather forecast for next week, it's supposed to be hot again. I didn't look that far. I knew this week was really nice, and it is so far. But, and so there's no guarantee that when we hit September, it is going to be cool. But yet again, I think it's an odds thing. I think we have better odds being there. So I think we really need to look at our start date for our calendar and what, where are we maximizing our educational time for kids. That's something I'd like the Calendar Committee to take a look at. I think in talking with TEA, I think that's a conversation that they are willing to entertain as well. And then just casual conversations with people in our community, I think it's something that some people would like for us to entertain. Specifically, the ability to try to get standardized more with Sentinel Vanguard Sentinel. I always say it the wrong way. I always prioritize the school that's in Tiffin first. But with Vanguard Sentinel, so that our students could have some more consistency when we have school start times. So I think that's something that, the more that we can be aligned with the other entities that our kids go to for educational experiences, I think the better. So I'm very pleased and thank you for everybody that's made it a nice start to the year. I will say it was wonderful seeing so many staff members at the game on Friday. There were a number of people that commented, we saw more staff members than normal at games, and that's been a nice thing. I think it was a, it was a great event, topped off by the fact that, you know, the team won. That's always nice as well, but that was really the cherry on top. It's been a nice beginning of the school year, and thanks for all the principals, staff, teachers, bus drivers, custodians, food service workers, technology people that have, that have worked really hard to do so.
Any questions for Mr. Richards?
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Richards, with the district calendar. Is there a, so I think this will be the first time I've been on the board since we've had to approve calendar. Is there a date by which that calendar has to be submitted to us for approval?
Yes. Per the negotiated agreement, it must be submitted by February.
Okay.
At the February board meeting. I will tell you, my preference would be to go earlier than that. My preference would be to do it still this calendar year. I think that's better practice for parents, to make sure we try to communicate things to them in a timely manner. So it would be my hope to still recommend that within this calendar year. But there is a deadline per our negotiated agreement that it must be done no later than February.
Any other questions for Mr. Richards? That'll bring us to item four, which is the opportunity for the public to address the board. Per policy, each person addressing the board will give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. Are there any individuals who would like to address the board? Seeing none, that brings us to the consent agenda. So that is items 5.01 through 5.08, with the headers being approve the minutes from the July special and regular board meetings, approve the treasures reports for July, 5.03 administrative employment, 5.04 is employment with a correction, 5.05 donations and grants. Again, thank you to those businesses and individuals who support our district and our kids. 5.06 stipends, 5.07 statement of purpose budget reports for 2023 and 2024, and 5.08 certificate of fiscal officer. Would...
Move to approve.
Yeah.
Second.
Did you second? He said move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussions or questions?
Only question I have, I see that Mitchell Shiber will be custodian and working as the head stadium custodian, and also Dan Corp are going to maintenance. I'm assuming that's just a filling of a maintenance position and then filling the vacancy caused by that.
That's correct. We've had some openings within our maintenance department due to resignations. So these are just moves to replace currently vacant positions. Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Cook?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. This brings us to action items. With 6.01, approve the tentative agreement with the Ohio Association of Public School Employees for new 2023 through 2025 collective bargaining agreement with TCS food service employees. Entertain a motion?
Move.
Thank you.
Second.
So I'm very pleased with the work Mr. Boz, our Assistant Superintendent, has done to work with both of our unions, but I'll talk specifically about food service and then our aid union next. With food service, when we look at our comparison areas, and this is a theme that we kind of see within Tiffin City Schools, we have lost our ability to be as competitive on some of our wages. So we didn't get here overnight. We're not going to get ourselves out overnight. But we have, we are looking at an agreement to increase our wages, obviously, with food service. For people that are not aware, food service is a self-supportive entity, so really, they are giving themselves a wage, we're giving them a wage increase off of their work, actually. Food service is self-supportive. So these, this increase that we're giving food service is to help make them more competitive. It's kind of a wage adjustment. Are they in the top among their field for food service? No. And I know I see some people from the association, and they would say no as well. But I think we can say this, this marks a, an honest and pretty dramatic step to try to right that ship so that they can become more competitive. And I think that's been our goal through negotiations. And so I'd like to thank the union and OPSI for their willingness to come to the table so that we can try to make it better for our employees. I think they would agree that we're not there yet at to where we want to be, but I think this does represent a positive step in the right direction.
So are we, are we required to have a zero balance at the end of the year? Otherwise, maybe making money off of...
So zero balance as in?
As in, we're not making money off the students.
Correct. We're not making money off the students.
So that means a zero balance at the end of the year? Costs, costs and expenses are equal.
We can have a positive balance. We can't have a negative balance.
Correct.
By law, we're required to have a positive balance.
You have to, so basically, the law wants you to make money off the students through the cafeteria.
Need to cover your costs. That would be correct.
Okay. But we can donate food if we want to.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a... General fund would cover any shortfall that would occur if that account didn't have funds in it. Now, I believe we're at just over a half a million dollars in our food service balance. So if that were to ever go negative, we eat into the carryover. General fund would be able to cover that so that it doesn't close in the red.
Dr. Gase, let me, we had a brief discussion about this at the Finance Committee. There's a reasonable limit to that fund, isn't there? Is there a limit at which the state will come in and say, you need to do something about this?
They don't tell you what the formula is, but they can require a spend down plan. They think you have excess reserves in your food service fund, and that does happen in districts from time to time. We're not there yet. I've not seen anything that would indicate such, but they could require you to spend that down.
So nothing would preclude our staff from saying, hey, we want to make more money, so we want to offer this or this to try and produce more income?
That would be correct. Creative solutions. Some districts have food trucks, et cetera. They have catering, things of those natures.
And the staff could be the ones impetus for that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Further questions or discussion regarding 6.01? Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Kizabelle?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yep.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. That brings us to 6.02, which is approve the tentative agreement with the Ohio Association of Public School Employees for a new collective bargaining agreement for TCS educational aids. Entertain a motion?
Moved.
Thank you.
Yet again, same thing. Our educational aides do some fantastic work for us, and we appreciate the work that they do. Hang on. Oh, sorry. Is there, did we do something wrong?
Mr. Perez was the second. Dr. Gase was the first.
Yeah. I was like, what did I do wrong?
Nope.
I was like, no, we did really good work with the union. I'm very happy. Like, all of them not voting for this.
There were faces behind you.
Waving in the background.
Yeah. You should probably listen to her anyway. So no, I appreciate the work that our educational aides do, and yet again, this is another step. We're looking at a dollar out, a dollar an hour increase for our classified aides, educational aides, to try to get them to be more competitive. Yet again, they would be the first ones to say, and I think if you look over at them sitting there, are we at the top of that, are we at the top of that food chain in our area for educational aids? No, we are not. But I do think both sides came together. Yet again, I couldn't be more pleased with all of our associations and all of our employees that we didn't get here overnight. We're not going to dig ourselves out overnight. But I think, I think what both sides have recognized, the need to come together to try to make concerted efforts to start riding that ship. Are we there? No. But I think we are making strong efforts to make sure that we value and support our employees. If you want to have a good organization, you better have a good employees, but you better be able to attract and retain good employees. And I think it's a testament to the Board of Education. It's a testament to the associations that have come together to try to find middle ground to be able to do that in the most fiscally supportive manner possible. So we, once again, I appreciate everybody that's come together for this.
Questions for Mr. Richards regarding 6.02? Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Williams?
Abstain. I have a family member employed under this.
Yes. 6.03, approve of bus stops for 2023, 2024 school year.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
We are required by law to approve these. I would point out that if we started the school year later, we'd be approving these after, you know, before the start of the school year, but now because we're doing it in August, it, one of those things, Mr. Williams, I know this is a pet peeve of yours. So just another thing to say, if we started a little bit later, we'd be more in compliance with your wish. But we are board approving our bus stops as required by law.
Questions for Mr. Richards?
I would just like to thank Randy and Jody for the work they do out at the bus garage and all the bus drivers. I know I had the opportunity to talk on Saturday to a Perrysburg bus driver. They brought, I don't know, six buses to Senakese for a cross-country meet, and I actually thanked him for being a bus driver. He said, well, I appreciate that. It's my first year. So I think it's important that we recruit bus drivers and we keep bus drivers.
Yes.
So thanks for the work they do.
They do an incredible job, and if anybody was watching the news with the Louisville bus and the districts, I'm even more thankful for our incredible bus team and all the work that they do.
I know DeSharden had five charter buses.
Yeah, that was...
I wonder if they do that every week.
That was coming down for an athletic event where it was two, we're over two hours away from them. That's going to be something we get to go there next year. And one of the difficulties, I would imagine, is that because of the length of the time, distance between the games, a lot of their regular drivers are still running their routes when they have to leave to be able to come. So therefore, they had to look at shape and charter. So this gives us something to look forward to next year, and we have a whole year to be able to figure out how we're going to be able to respond in that way as well. So, yes, five charter buses.
On Saturday, you were at the meet. They had to change their schedule at the last moment. So we could have lost our bus drivers, but they still came through and brought our kids to that meet, so.
They, our, our bus driver, our whole transportation department, Randy, Jody, as you said, do truly a phenomenal job, and we really can't thank them enough. And it's much nicer to be in this situation right now than, as you alluded to, Dr. McBride, some other districts that are not in our situation. So that's, that's a strength for us.
Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizabelle?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Perez? Dr. McBride?
Yes. 6.04, approve the pay scales for 2023, 2024 school year.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
So this is for our non-unionized employees, our classified employees, custodians, secretaries, technology people. And yet again, we're looking at a pay scale where they make some increases as well to try to make them be more competitive. And there are a few of those classifications where we're looking at a pay adjustment to yet again, try to keep making those positions more competitive. As I've said with the other positions, and it's what we said with our teachers, we are not at the top of the food chain yet. I don't think we're where any of us would like to be yet as, from a competitive standpoint, but I think these increases are a step in the correct direction to help us get there.
Any questions for Mr. Richards?
I will also include that we're including the substitute pay scale in there. One of the things that we are doing is to try to attract more people to be substitutes. So we are creating building substitute positions, full-time building subs, that would come every single day so that we could plug them in to, for missed people that do not get a regular sub. And we're also having a pay enhancement for those people who are going to be long-term subs for them because we do expect more of those long-term subs. We expect them to do lesson planning. We expect them to do grading. We expect them to contact home from time to time. And so because we have additional expectations on them, we think it's only appropriate that they receive some compensation for those additional duties that we have them cover because they're going to be in there for a long period of time. And we need people to cover for teachers that are out for extended periods of time, and including people that are going to be out for an entire year. With the personnel consent, we now have an English teacher that's going to be here as a long-term sub for an entire year. That's the kids' teachers. And in fact, I believe for some people on the board, it will be your child's teacher. And so we want to make certain that those people are fairly compensated for the work that they're doing. Yet again, all of our goal to make sure we have substitutes so that our teachers are making certain that they're using the time that they have in their contract to actually do for planning purposes and collaboration purposes and contacting parents, rather than covering another class due to an absent teacher. So all things that we're trying to do to make us more effective and efficient in the classroom.
Questions for Mr. Richards? Thank you. Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Williams?
Abstain.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. This brings us to 6.05, approve the TEA settlement agreement. Entertain. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
So whenever we have a negotiated agreement, there's a possibility that there can be some vagueness in the language in working with TEA. There was some vagueness in the language, and so we're just clarifying. Part of this was a board agreement to, to take care of the premium share. There was a question as to when that effective date started, whether it was July or September. And so we're just clarifying, and working with TEA, the spirit really was to do that in July. But we need to make sure we codify that language to reflect that, so that, we're bringing that back for the board. Yet again, a settlement agreement, it's really just an MOU to make sure we're clarifying that. And that is not just for, it's going to be, and all other Tiffin City Schools employees, so that I think our unions already know about that as well, but just in case they don't know, we're not just doing this for TEA. This is for all employees, to make certain that we are, we're fair and transparent with everybody.
That is just two years.
The, the agreement, yeah, it's a two-year agreement. So the reality is, because of this, it's really only a two-month, it's only a two-month window that we're talking about because it's a two-year agreement, so it would have already, that would have happened next year as well. But it's really that, that effective date, so we're starting it effective in July rather than September. So it's really a, it's really a two-month agreement, but I think that's something that's, will be valued by our staff to make certain that we can be, be fair, fair to them as much as possible.
Other questions, discussion? Thanks to everybody who has worked on all of these pieces and working to advance the district so that we are a destination for students, families, and for all of those who make the district go. Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 6.06, approve the compensation step increase for administrators and supervisors.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Yet again, as we said for everybody else, some, typically, there's a notion of me too. When, with our teachers taking a 4% increase, our administrators are a little bit more fairly compensated. So therefore, they're not going to be getting a 4% increase. They're going to be getting less. And I just think that's, yet again, our goal is not to enrich one at the expense of somebody else. Our goal is to make sure that we are competitive across the board. So the administration is not getting a 4% increase, which is what other people have had. And I just think that's appropriate for where we are at this time. I think a 2% kind of keeps us and sustains us where we are. We still want to make certain that we are competitive there, but it doesn't feel right to make, to try to make administrators even more competitive while we're still working to get our other positions to be more competitive. And I appreciate what our administrators do. And so this is also a step increase for them, which is commensurate with what typically happens at this time.
Question is...
I couldn't hear that. Yes. Yes, I believe that that was mentioned in the assumptions. I'll definitely make sure they're all included in mine. I know she had increases built into her forecast as well.
Other questions? Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Kizabelle?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 6.07, I am, am I right number? Yep. Approve the Pitney Bowes agreement. Did I say that right? Mr. Richards?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just for, at least for new mail machine for the district office, so we can send out communication. That's it. Nothing fun, nothing fun and exciting about this one.
Any questions? Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizabelle?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 6.08, approve the 2023, 2024 SCBDD excess cost agreement.
Moving.
Thank you.
Second.
It, it happens from time to time where we have to do excess cost agreements. This is for a school of opportunities based upon kids moving in and needing extra services. This is kind of a pro forma thing that this board, I think, has to do on a pretty regular basis. And yet again, because it's hard to be able to predict that with certainty, what any of, what any time we're going to have needs with students with disabilities and what those costs are going to be. But we appreciate the school of opportunity as a partner for Tiffin City Schools. They do a wonderful job.
Any questions? Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Kizabelle?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. 6.09, approve school-based counseling services agreement.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
This is for our school-based counseling that we do inside Tiffin City Schools. We are very blessed in Tiffin City Schools to have a resource where any student has the ability to receive counseling services while during the school day. I know I've worked with Mrs. Tuitt, and we're going to be looking at some different outcomes, which I'm excited to share with the board in the future. But I'm just, I'm, I couldn't be more thrilled that the Board of Education, prior to me even being, arriving here, has valued the importance of students' mental health, making sure we're taking care of their social, emotional well-being. And I think this is an outstanding way of doing that by hiring professionals who are trained in this area.
Any questions for Mr. Richards?
Yes, Superintendent, I can't find it really quickly, but I read it earlier in preparing for this. The amount that we set that can be billed before they ask for your permission at some point, was it 166 or 170,000? I can't remember what the amount was.
160,000.
Look, 160,000. How did you get to that number, and do you foresee that growing next year? Because I think it's been a regular cost now that we have to anticipate budgeting for.
That's what we've, that's been, I think, the number that we've used previously. So there's really no change to that number. I do think that's something that we're going to need to dig into as we move forward to say, what are those numbers moving forward? Is this an anticipated cost of 160? And you're right, I think we've been looking at maybe Mrs. Tuitt somewhere. I think we flirted with that number quite a bit, so I think we need to probably work on that with Mr. Cook to make sure, what should we be forecasting? Is that 160,000? Is that a realistic number? Is that aspirational? I think that's something we're going to need to explore moving forward. I think that's something we're going to need to explore moving forward, though, Mr. Perez.
That probably applies a little bit to the previous item also.
I agree.
Right, we're regularly approving it, and approving it is fine, but you know, are we, are we probably forecasting is a different question.
Yeah.
Correct. I think in forecasting, I think it's clear, having been on the board, that that need isn't shrinking. And we want to make sure we're providing what we need, not what we can't, like, we're making sure we're meeting our need and that we're budgeting for it.
And that that would go back to some of those data points that I'm hoping to work with the company with Mrs. Tuitt, where we can report back to the board in the future, so we can talk about what that need is. Because I agree with you, it seems to be a growing need, but I think we need to quantify that a bit more when we, when we start budgeting and allocating school district funds for things.
Are any of these services available or could they be provided by, say, our social service people that, and they could be billed like for Medicaid purposes? Is there any of that?
I think that's, could we do that? I believe the answer is yes, we could. But that's now a choice where we have to talk about anytime we we try to do one thing, what's the unintended consequence of what we do the other way?
You have tiered services, Dr. Gase, and so you have people who are employees of the district. And based on their licenser, they provide different tiered things to meet different social, emotional needs. So this specific contract is for your mental health counselors, so they're a clinical counselor. They're those who can diagnose and treat at a different tier than those who are currently employed by the district. But also you have school psychs who perform a very different role. Each of those licensers performs a different role. I believe who y'all are contracted with through Wyandotte, I believe that they also do bill insurance. So because they're clinical, they're able to bill insurance, and this is what is above and beyond that cost, I believe.
Well, but I, was that your question? Or I actually thought you were going somewhere different with that.
No, no, that that was this, yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't sure how these licensed or licensed people could, whether they could bill insurance independently or whether we were paying for totality, you know, if we were just paying. Or could we supplement that by having, but I know social workers can bill. I didn't know about the others, but I know the social workers could, because that's one of the reasons we hired a social worker is that, you know, because that was the possibility. But it's a little bit sticky, I know, and it takes a lot of paperwork. But on the other hand, money's money, right?
It depends on the role that they're doing.
Yeah.
And what, so socially, they all have a broad array of services that they can deliver. It depends on what role they're in. So typically, your district social worker is not billing insurance because they're doing broad spectrum.
Right, right.
Whereas your clinical mental health counselors are typically billing insurance. And then for those who aren't, don't have applicable insurance or those pieces, then there's supplemental cost is typically how it is done.
Yeah, I mean, other, you know, you would just bill the patient or the family or whatever, balance bill. But now it's because we're asking for that service, we're providing it.
Any other questions? Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Perez? Dr. McBride?
Yes. 6.10, approve resilience therapy services agreement.
Don't move. Second.
So I'm going to talk about 610, 611, and 612 in the same time, because it's the same conversation for all three of them. As the board remembers, at the last board meeting, we did have an SLP that left our district after July 10th. That's a harder position to be able to fill. When people leave after July 10th, it makes it cumbersome for the district to find a suitable replacement. So 610, 611, and 612 are contracting with three different entities to have the the SLP services that would traditionally be done by one person. So it's three contracts. Resilience Therapy is providing a service one day a week. Wheeler Pediatric is providing service for one day a week. And Connie English is providing service for three days a week. So that's what we are now doing because of, and I'm not mad at the person, but because of one person leaving our district, we're now having a contract with three other entities to make up for that that departure. So 611, 12, and 13, I'm sorry, 11, and 12 are all part of the same situation, not 13, 13 is different. So it's all part of the same.
Questions for Mr. Richards?
And we will be posting that job obviously for the year moving forward, for next year, to hopefully have a full-time person in-house to be able to do that.
Is that a question?
What? I will tell you that if anybody has a, once is advising a student of different fields to go into to, if they want a steady job where they can work anytime, anywhere, school psychologist and SLPs are great occupations to go into because they can work. There is a, there's, it's almost a bidding war for those people. Are we somewhat competitive? Somewhat, yes, but on the same token, there are simply not enough people going into those fields. So they they can pick and choose where they go. So if anybody knows anybody that wants to go into the field of being an SLP or school psychologist, it's a great field and they can have their pick of schools that they would like to work into because schools are so desperate for those services.
Did we not have a contract with PT Services for that at one time?
Yeah, I believe at one time, but PT Services was not able to fulfill that additional need for us for this year, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Ndo?
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. This will now bring us to 6.11, which Mr. Richards also alluded to, so approve the Wheeler Pediatric Services Agreement.
Don't move. Second.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Cook?
Kizabelle?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. And the last of those three, 6.12, approve Connie English SLP Agreement.
Don't move.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. Cook?
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabelle?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. This brings us to 6.13, Strategic Solutions Proposal. Entertainer motion?
Don't move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
So I will say, this is all being paid for out of Esser's funds, but I'm going to defer, as much as I would enjoy talking about it, I'm actually going to defer to our our new treasurer, Mr. Cook, because he has some more in-depth experience with strategic solutions for SCView. And so I'll defer to Mr. Cook to talk about that.
Jump in whenever you want.
I'm sure I will, but you're, you do a great job.
So Strategic Solutions is going to provide us software to digitize all of our old employee records, our student files, and eventually turn our attention to things like our hiring workflow, our requisition and purchase order system. Nothing wrong with the way we do it now, but we're in a digital world, and this will enable us to be much more efficient once this is up and running. I believe the last number had 80-plus percent of districts around the state use this or another solution. It'll also provide us if we'd have a fire or a flood. I know Mr. Richards is going to be all over that one. We don't lose our records. They're here at our fingertips. It's much more efficient in the long run. And again, Esser's going to pick up the bulk of the cost. A lot of this is the record scanning. There are just volumes of records everywhere as I've been around, so we'll free up some additional classroom space as well. But feel free to dive in on that.
Nope, I completely agree.
The the Esser funds are primarily covering the the one-time. One-time cost. 200,000 or so. Yes, 200 changed on that, yes. Okay.
Are you saying that we're going to digitize all the old records?
That's the plan. They pick them up, they'll scan them. Did you see the number in here? It's eight, they're estimating 800,000 records.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking, can't we just store them somewhere and just say, hey, you know, if we need them, we'll let you know?
They actually store them in a warehouse. It will take them some time to chew through.
Oh, okay.
So if we need to get a hold of any of those records, they label them on the boxes. They know exactly where they're stored, what they are, student or staff files. I'm sorry, Dr. Gase, that was 800,000 at the bus garage.
Just at the garage, yeah.
Yeah, there's 1.7 million elsewhere. Yeah, I think Ben spent some time with them this summer prior to my arrival, and they were astounded at how much paper is out and about and around.
So I know it's a, it's a sticker shock upfront, but yet again, I think, and I forget the statistic, of some sort of system like this, whether it's SCView or Strategic Solutions or another entity, something like 80, 85% of the districts in the state of Ohio have now kind of had an automated workflow and online digital process for how we go about doing things. So I think this is a step in the right direction for our district to kind of join the, I like to say, join the 21st century, but we are well through. We're almost a quarter of the way through the 21st century.
Wouldn't it, I mean, what I guess I was getting at is, is there a requirement? Like, can we just take the last 10 years and digitize those? Do we have to, how far back do we have to go?
We can pick and choose that.
Okay, all right.
The decision was made to try to do it all, but yes, we can, we can pick and choose.
I mean, because financially, I mean, what are the odds that you need to go back more than 10 years, I guess?
So we are required, though, by law to hold some records in perpetuity. So any of our, permanently, so any of our, some of our financial records, we must keep forever. So I think part of that, when when Mr. Cook was, my joke is, what could ever go wrong with most of our financial records that are in the basement of a 100-year-old building in cardboard boxes? What could ever possibly go wrong in that situation?
Same thing could go wrong if somebody steals your data.
True, but this is actually backed up.
Then it'd be you.
But now they have, they have backups for this, which is part of the reason to go to it as well. We are required by law to keep those records. I don't know what happens if there's flooding that happens in our basement and they all get wet. I would know how it's responded to, but I think we have to, there's a responsibility for us to do due diligence to make certain that we are doing our best to provide for that. So that 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 first upfront sticker shock, because they're having to scan so many documents, it's painful. However, the good part is, once we get this done, Mr. Cook, under Mr. Cook's guidance, then we can work on making sure that we stay digitized moving forward, so we don't have that additional reoccurring cost to scan documents as we keep proceeding.
Yeah, correct. All the fiscal feed right into that, and then the student records, we may keep the previous year on site, but it'll be very small, very negligible moving forward.
And that that frees up storage space that we don't have to have, which can be costly.
Correct.
We've digitized other government labels, and it looks expensive, but we're not doing it ourselves. They're doing it, which saves you a ton on manpower. And again, we have to keep some of those records forever, but their contract says they're going to preserve some of, they have off-site servers as a backup, which is what everybody, I think, normally does now. But I think it's, the plan is to get so that we're doing things digitally now in the future and getting that done, I think. But you said Esser covers the big startup, and then what are we looking at annually for a cost of the licensing?
$1,000 on the reoccurring cost, depending on the modules we decide to use.
Okay, and are they going to be still the ones scanning them in the future, or do we get to do it?
They would scan them in the future. We would have the ability to add one-off items. If I needed to add a document to a personnel file, I can scan that as a PDF. I believe they use Amazon AWS for their off-site hosting.
It's meeting a number of needs. There's an insurance component to it, but also it's bringing up, bringing up space, which is at a premium, and it allows us to become more efficient as we move forward.
So I think a great example of this is the Lincoln Pre-K Building. If we wanted additional spaces for classrooms, when you see that we have, I don't know what the total number of images that there, but it's it's a healthy number. We have almost two classrooms that are taken up at Lincoln with just records. So if we ever want, so when we look at it one way, it's a, it's a healthy cost. But if I ever said, hey, I want to create additional classrooms for preschool, and we had to look at modulars or something like that, this is cheaper because we're freeing up the space that actually are not being used by staff and kids, it's being used by paper that we're required to keep. So I think this is a, I think this is a prudent investment. It it is a big sticker shock upfront, but I think in the long run, this this allows us to be more nimble and allows us to be more responsive to different records requests to that are back historical. We don't have to dig through the archives. Some of, some of our files, for people that remember these types of things, some of them are actually on microfiche. I don't believe we have a microfiche reader now, so now we have to take the microfiche if people do a records request of that time period to a place that actually has a microfiche reader. If there's any kids watching this board meeting, you should Google what microfiche is. It'll be an interesting thing to look at. It used to exist back when I was in school. I don't think kids know, like, that passed the floppy disk even for them. It predates a floppy disk, and they don't even know what that is.
Any further questions? Mr. Cook?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Perez? Mr. Kizabelle?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
My only concern is what if the technology goes down, which it invariably does?
I had it for, oh, gosh, I'm going to say five, six years, never had an outage once. I shouldn't say that. The biggest concern I had was my internet connection from Spectrum. The system worked great. I probably just jinxed this on that, but it was very reliable.
I can tell you, of course, I'm an old guy, but I like the paper, but I don't like the paper getting flooded, because I've had that too.
With any technology, there's never any guarantee, but their uptime was phenomenal.
This is a 6.14, which is a resolution authorizing the sale of real property.
Don't move.
Thank you.
Second.
This is for, some people may not be aware of the fact that we own some property down at the end of Charlotte Street. It is down along the river. Originally, that was gifted to us by a longtime resident of the city of Tiffin and Tiffin City Schools. If anybody likes the history part of it, originally, he donated the land to us because when we put in the football field, the land, the, the, the ground fill for the football field itself, he figured out was was cheaper if we just hauled it in from these lots at the end of Charlotte than to try to bring it in from the outside. And he was, I believe, a longtime, I'm looking at some of you that have been in this community for a while, a gentleman by the name of Lynn Troxel, I believe, was a longtime advocate for Tiffin City Schools, lived in Tiffin City. So we appreciate that donation, and it was done to be able to help the district. Since we've put in that football field, it has served no use for us. There was somebody that acquired, we went through the proper procedures to auction the land, and then to be able to sell this land, and it's at the end of Charlotte. So the district can now make money, and so I don't even know if Mr. Troxel is still with us or or if any of his family members. But I would say I thank him and his family for their generous donation they made years ago to Tiffin City Schools. It helped us back then, and it can now help us again. And so I'd like to thank people that do come forward to try to do what's best for Tiffin City Schools. So I'd like to thank the Troxel family for that initial contribution that I think took place in the 40s or 50s. So thanks to them, they gave it to us, I believe, for a dollar.
Any questions?
Do we know what it's going to be used for?
We sell that to a private entity, and we don't get to decide any of that. I do believe it's for a group that's going to be, actually, I don't think it's appropriate for me to share what that is. I think there will, there's going to be a new owner. I do think it's going to be something that will be beneficial to our community as a whole. But I don't think I should be the one to share what those plans are. I think the new owner should be the one to share what their plans are. But I think it will be something that will be beneficial to the city of Tiffin.
That's fair.
Safe to say it's not going to be a building.
It's not going to be a building. It's, it's land that's right along the river.
Almost below water level then.
Yeah, it's land that's right along the river, so.
Any further questions? Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizabelle?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. This brings us to 6.15, resignation of Kaylee Cotum.
Don't move.
Second.
Yet again, as we talked about last time, and wish Ms. Cotum nothing but the best moving forward. But it was a resignation that occurred on July 31st, pretty last minute. We are very fortunate that we were able to fill that high school English position with a long-term sub that we just board approved earlier. The person that was board-approved to be a long-term sub has his doctorate in rhetoric and composition. That's pretty fortunate for a district for an honors and upper-level English course. So, but this is a practice that just the district is going to be doing to make sure we work with our our employees. It is fine if if people leave for other positions, but there's, state has a deadline of July 10th for a very specific reason, because trying to find people after July 10th, as we've now found, for two positions that left after July 10th. The one position we're covering with three outside entities for one position. And the other one, literally, we got the Friday before the start of the school year, and it was really just a good fortune. And so I'm happy that how we've been able to solve these, but we need to make certain moving forward. It's fine when our employees leave, if they, if they have a personal reason for wanting to move on, we completely support that. But our job is to make certain that we're making sure we have appropriate people in front of our students at Tiffin City Schools. And resigning after July 10th puts us in a disadvantageous position for that.
Questions for this?
To be clear, we are approving the non-consent of the resignation.
Correct.
And one of the things that I think we we've talked about with policy is potentially moving forward so that we don't have to board approve these. And I feel badly we have to have even a person's name on this, is that. is that in the organizational meeting in January, maybe we just do a, you guys give me certain authorities at the beginning of the school year, that we take one action, that this is our standard practice so that we don't have to vote and board approve this every time. I think that's something for the policy committee. We've already started having a conversation about that. I think that's something that would be up to the purview of the board, whether we should do that in January. I don't anticipate we're going to have any now for the rest of the year. I don't anticipate that as a problem.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Yes for a non-consent.
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Perez?
No.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. So that finishes our action items, which brings us to board discussion. We'll open up the floor. Mr. Williams, I believe you had board discussion?
I do, yeah.
Lovely.
One moment. So I've had a conversation with Mr. Richards about this. We do have several items that I think we need to have board discussion about, but if we took the time at the regular board meetings, we could be here until Tuesday, right? So I'd like to have a little bit of dialogue about maybe some special working meetings where we could have some healthy debate, right? Those are typically not attended by as many people. We don't broadcast those on Facebook, so it'll allow us to have some, the debate we need to have still in a public meeting, but typically not in front of a wide audience, right?
In explaining why we can't do that in executive session. So it's not appropriate to do it there because the rules around executive session are very set. But there are things that we are the advisory board, in a sense, that we need to have a lot of discussion about.
And we can't have, you know, email discussion, we can't round robin those, we can't have a chain of emails, right? So there's a lot of rules about what we can and can't discuss outside of a public meeting. So I think it'd be to our advantage to have a working meeting or two. Maybe we pre-schedule some, just we can have some debate, right? Because I think there's a lot of issues we do need to talk through, particularly with our financial situation. We've had a lot of changes in the district in the last year, right? A new superintendent, new treasurer, and I think there's some things we need to have a a public, but not as public, setting for.
Although it doesn't require as much staff and as much administration and as many people to be required to be here and be present. There's no secret to it. The public is still welcome. Even these meetings are a board meeting held in public.
Correct.
And so it would still be that and anybody is welcome to come, but it would free up staff time and it would shorten these so that it is not as much of a tax on those who do come.
Yep.
So would you be wanting to explore having these yet this calendar year? Or are you wanting to do that with the organizational meeting? And then I'm going to look at Mr. Cook because I don't know some of the rules around those things. Well, it would just be a special board meeting, right?
Just a special board meeting, a work session.
I think we have a lot of financial issues to discuss as a board that it might be in our best interest to have one, at least on the calendar for this calendar year.
So some districts have a regular work session
Okay.
with each meeting. Is that something that you'd entertain, like a half-hour work session before each meeting?
Yes.
Because then you could space it out and figure out, you know?
That'd be a great solution, yeah.
I think it'd be, might be my preference because then, you know, to schedule another meeting.
Correct.
So we're already booking out that time for it.
And it's time-boxed, right? So you can't go for 10 hours if you?
Yeah, exactly. That's my, one of the other points is that, you know, as you know, meetings go on longer than they need to a lot of times. If you've got a set period of time, you're going to end it.
We've set the parameters as what's expected of everyone. But I think the question I have is, because we've discussed this in the past, since it's a special meeting, do we have to set the topic that we're discussing? Are we limited to that in advance, so?
A special meeting would be on the topics at hand, yeah. A work session could be more broad-based.
Okay.
Find in advance.
I don't think there's any shortage of topics that we could put into a list of topics we need to work through and we get as far as we can in that time-box session.
I think it's important that we start to do it. I think superintendent's been here a year and we have, I know you're new, but we really, we have to start addressing some of these on the policy level as a board. We need to start stepping in as a policy, like addressing the five-year forecast. We've read the, what's our action steps next? What's our policy going to be regarding that?
There's occasionally legislative things that come up where, I'll say right now, we tread lightly on those, right? We almost shy away from them so that we don't say things that might cause a debate that we don't want to have. So I think it's, I think it's a good thing for us to do.
Well, the, if the meetings are like tonight, you know, easy, right?
Yeah.
Easy to have an extra hour. Not that I want to, but.
Well, but I do think a half hour might be, even though we're just starting, I think a half hour might be a little brief for some of the larger issues that we have at hand. But as we're discussing it, if we move forward, so we would have September, October, November, December, would y'all be able or open to coming in early and doing a work session prior to our board meetings?
I think it's a good way to start, just see, you know, finish the year out, what, come in at 6:00 and have a half hour prior.
That's fine with me.
Good way to start, anyway.
Mr. Kizabeth, do you have thoughts?
I'm not sure you can get it done in a half hour. I think an hour is better. I just want to caution all of us and Dustin said that, that what we do is still public. And I think it's important that, oh, now the board's having secret meetings. Now I don't want to be any part of that. I think what we have to do has to be upfront and I understand that we have a meeting in public, but I think the public needs to know what's going on. And I agree, we are trying to be competitive. We've raised some salaries. That's going to affect the five-year forecast. We know that we've got a levy coming up eventually and I think we have to be salesmen, that we want our district to be a destination district, that we hire good people and we keep good people. So that financial piece, I think, is a big one. And as long as we're above board and out front with everything, I'm fine with that.
And I think it's important, again, like, we can only have meetings in public. We can't do anything, including emails, including text messages. Like, we can't do those things without violating sunshine.
And I think we've been very good with that.
I think that we've been exceptional about that and I think that we really wanted to give Mr. Richards time and now Mr. Cook, you've had 28 days.
Yeah, we're coming up on 30 days.
Good. So I do think that Dustin, Mr. Richards, Mr. Williams' points are incredibly salient that there's a lot coming up that I think that we need time, but also we want to be mindful of everybody else's time with those pieces.
So, I mean, I would think the better transparency would be having it at the same time. And maybe you say, well, if it takes an hour, we start the meeting an hour, half hour later. I mean, what's the difference, right? It's a public meeting.
Right.
So you just say, oh, we need an hour tonight for?
That would impact everybody else who has to come in or set up or do all those pieces.
But the point is, you know, it's a public meeting. At least then you're not, some would argue, well, how's everybody going to know about the special session? Or, I've devoted this much time every month to come to the meeting. Now you're going to throw another one in, you know? I think you give people a chance to pencil that in. If they want to go, they can come. I mean, I think having community input, we used to have people come in and actually follow our data real closely and would hold us, hold our feet to the fire and, you know, I think it's good. Yeah, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, there's, I don't think there's any reason why we can't sit here and have those discussions before the board meeting. And if no one's here, I mean, it's a, it's a great time then to have that as an agenda item on the regular board meeting to just kind of give a rundown of what was discussed, right? I mean.
And I, I'm one that does like to have meetings for the sake of having meetings, but maybe we're in a situation where we have to meet twice a month rather than once a month for a while.
It could be.
I know, I know a neighboring district, they've been meeting twice a month for as long as I can remember, so.
I'm a firm believer that if people come prepared, you know, you can get meetings done a lot faster. And sometimes when you make meetings open-ended, they end up being open-ended. They get filled with that amount of time, more time than necessary.
So I think it could be fair that we start, you know, we do the first two. We do September and October. We come in somewhere between a half hour and hour before. We do a work session and then I think we assess. I think that we can assess, we can see, is this an appropriate amount of time? How is this format working? How is this impacting those who also are coming in for the full board meeting? But I think we take our own piece where we implement it and we assess it and then we adjust if needed. Thoughts on?
That's fair.
Those, September and October, we'll come in prior to the board meeting?
Yep.
Prior to the full board meeting for a work session, because it is still a board meeting. So typically, we start at 6:30. What time? I would, I would say we start with 5:45. We meet a happy medium. Does that work for all?
That works for me.
At 5:45?
Do it.
So let's, that'll give you time to notice, I think. Yeah, you had nodded, yes.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
Define for me again what you want to do in the work session. Are we, will we have listed topics that we're going to be discussing?
We'll have an agenda because we'll have to notice it. So we'll have an agenda and some of those pieces, either we can put it forward as board members or Mr. Richards can also forecast what we, some of the things that they're going to need input on as well.
And I think it'd be fair if you set guidelines for one of you two to say, if you want this as a topic, you have to get it for us before this, whatever. And then it's fair, you guys just decide what the agenda is, I think, so that the public.
All of that'll have to be posted and noticed. And then we will, they're going to be meeting topics, I would assume that they might start, but they might have to carry over into the next meeting as well. I think that allowing us that open dialogue place to hash things out is vital.
Yeah, just outside the context of, let's get through these items and contracts we have to approve and things like that. It's, there's other work we need to do that this format doesn't really account for.
And that we can't do in other fashions or in an executive session. Everybody feel good? Alright, so Mr. Cook, that'll allow you to do those pieces. Thanks, Mr. Williams. Other pieces of board discussion?
I'd just like to commend the staff, these bugs out here. The, I know everyone saw the tennis courts and I've already had alumni come back and say they've played on them and, but I think that there's other things that we've done in the district that people haven't noticed. I'm very impressed that the roof here appears to have been done and that was, I think, with insurance proceeds on that settlement. And so that should last a while. So the middle school had that taken off and that's a pretty major thing. If you're a homeowner, yay, you got the roof done. That, and if you went to the football game, I did get comments and most people don't always take it for granted, but the bathrooms were improved and I don't think it was a major expenditure, but it shows that we actually take care of some of our assets here. And so people coming in from out of town were like, hey, you know, this looks more presentable, you know, it looks more professional. So that and, you know, there's lots of things starting for the school activities, so good luck to everyone.
Any other pieces for board discussion? I do not believe that we have any pieces for executive session this evening. So with that, our next meeting is September 25th. The full board meeting will be at 6:30 PM with a working session beginning at 5:45 PM here in the middle school cafeteria. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion.
Any discussion? First was Dr. Gase, second was Mr. Williams. Mr. Cook, oh, awesome, Mr. Cook, welcome. We were first.
It's been a good transition. Everybody's been very supportive, so I felt very welcomed.
Thank you very much. It was wonderful to have you here this evening.
Thank you.
Alright, we can round us out.
Yes. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Kizabeth?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Thank you all and have a good evening.